Everybody on?
He needed just a minute, so. There he is.
Okay, thank you. You can turn on your cameras, mute your Zoom, and that would be great. We can get started. Thank you. All right, we will now begin the February 3rd, the City of West Sacramento Meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Cub Scout PAC 49.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
All right, are you guys ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you for being patient and waiting.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very nice to have you here today.
Thanks for having us. Bye, guys.
Bye-bye. All right, pursuant to the executive order, Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom. To reduce the spread of COVID-19, members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. We will have live public comments, and we will continue to receive written comments. And all comments received by 4:30 will be provided to City Council and posted on the website. To make verbal comments during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom meeting hyperlink or the phone number listed on the city's website on the City Council's agenda. And I'll request public comment during Item 1A prior to the first item on consent and after the staff presentation for any other item on the agenda. And once the mayor has announced the public comment period, or if you'd like to make a comment, please do one of the following. If you're joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button, or if you're joining the meeting by phone, press star nine. And when it is your turn to comment, the clerk will call you by name or phone number, and the city staff will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes. The clerk will notify you when you have a 30-second remaining time to wrap up your comments. And once your three minutes or your public comment is ended, you will be muted again. So you can also join by calling 1-669-900-9128. And the ID number, I think, is 920-9564-2935. And passcode, is it the same?
Yes, Mayor, it's the same.
It's the same, I see. Okay, and the passcode is 004264. In addition to this process, I would like to remind council members the council procedures for conducting council meetings. The mayor is the presiding officer and acts as the chair at council meetings. In the absence or incapacity of the mayor, the mayor pro temp serves as the presiding officer at our next meeting, and we will be selecting the vice mayor this evening. The mayor will reference the item being presented. City staff will present the background of the item. Then we will turn to council for discussion and then open it to the public for comments. And we ask that there be no interruptions during that time for each public comment. We will close the public comment and return to council for council discussion. And then I will ask for a motion if it's required for the item. During the council discussion, a member of the city council or staff shall first address the mayor and gain recognition by raising their hand or using the raise hand button. Comments and questions should be limited to the issue before the council. Cross-exchange between council members and the public or between staff should be avoided. On questions to staff, a council member shall, after recognition by the mayor, address questions to the department head or designated staff member. And once recognized, a council member is considered to have the floor, and another council member may not interrupt the speaker except to make a point of order or a point of personal privilege. In such a circumstance, the council member holding the floor shall cease speaking until the point of order or privilege is resolved. And upon being recognized by the mayor, members of the staff shall hold the floor until completion of their remarks or until recognition is withdrawn by the mayor. A council member should not speak more than once in a particular subject until every other council member has had the opportunity to speak. Council members are encouraged to discuss items during the decision-making process and may ask staff to respond when appropriate. So the next item on the agenda is 1A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. And council members are prohibited from discussing any matter presented under the side. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or a live public comment request?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. Mayor, we did not receive any written public comments this evening for any agenda item. We have one raised hand in the attendees, Maria Guralva. Let me bring her in.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to remind everybody that the council seats that we have are made to rotate, and they're not made as a lifetime appointment. And as you know, our previous mayor was with us for 25 years, a quarter of a century. And as we know, one of our council members has been with us a decade already. And so I wanted to remind our city council members that the seats are made for, to be rotated so that all the residents can have a time to serve the city. And so I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Thank you for serving, and thank you for this opportunity to share that thought.
That's all we have, Mayor, for 1A.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item is Item 1B. Are there any reports from council member assignments listed on the agenda? Councilmember Alcala?
Thank you. I actually have attended my first LAFCO, the Yolo Local Agency Information Committee meeting on January 28th. And I will summarize what the board approved. They approved, and I believe our city manager has received a copy of MSR SOI for Yellow County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. It increased the SOI to cover the white areas in the Yolo sub-basin. There was an MSR SOI for Yolo County's community service districts. And that would include Cashville, which is actually Yolo, Esparta, Knights Landing, Madison. And we approved the I'm sorry, where was I? So let's see, we asked the staff to return in six months for an update on the LAFCO recommendations that were made. This is for consolidation of cities and oversight by the Board of Supervisors. There was an approval of the 2020 Yolo Local Agency Website Transparency Scoreboard. The agencies will be receiving updates next week. And they were also the RD900 proposed legislation to change governance. Our city manager, Erin Laurel, met with LAFCO staff regarding proposed legislation to set up a governance for RD900 to be similar to the Port District. This allows for a mix of council members and appointees to serve as the District Board of Directors. This proposed legislation is part of a larger bill that is going to be introduced. And finally, the file storage and digitization project. Christine, who is the LAFCO Executive Director, met with On Base and Yolo County Archives to set up a file naming facility, to facilitate files searching and updating the scanned historical files that we had. So that's the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few things to go through tonight. I'll try to be as brief as possible. First of all, on January 21st, attended the SECOG meeting, which was quite a few things, but just mainly information. The SECOG Board did approve that a public hearing and approved the unmet transit needs. I should note in there a couple of West Sac residents. Thank you for commenting onto the unmet transit needs. Feedback loop, I know some came in at the very last minute. So thank you for that. That is important, an important document documenting transportation needs of our community into the SECOG, the Greater SECOG Plan. So thank you. In addition, there are a number of informational agenda items I won't go through. I'm happy to pass on the agenda of that, but it included things like the 2021 Work Plan and some of the advocacy efforts that are being done by SECOG at the moment. So again, a lot more information during that meeting, and that's all I have to report from there. On January 25th, I took part in the Yolo Habitat Conservancy meeting. And most notable there is the election of a new chair, vice chair, which Yolo County and City of Davis now occupy both those chairs, as well as receive the fiscal update. And happy to report that the Conservancy still is moving along since the last time I visited that JPA. So physically, they're still in good shape and have some plans to kind of continue moving the plan along in implementation. On the next, our next day, the 26th, Tuesday, attended the Yolo County Consolidated Redevelopment Successor Agency Board Meeting. This is an annual meeting that occurs to oversee, provide oversight of all the city agents, former redevelopment agencies, in the distribution of funds and basically their recognized payment schedules, the ROBS. And there was a couple amended ones and more full ones from the Cities of Davis, winners, West Sac Woodland, all passed unanimously. But I should note that there was some good discussion in that, in that board meeting. I think staff is probably aware of it about some of the administrative costs that were being accrued. There was some questioning from that, from the, one of the district representatives, who rightly so, just wanted to make sure cities were being thoughtful in how they went about plugging in those numbers or administer this. West Sac is very different in this regard because West Sac actually has a lot of ongoing agreements, properties, everything else that we have in our portfolio. And so the administrative costs, excuse me, were well laid out. So thank you to staff for doing that. And so anyway, it was a good discussion. Again, all passed unanimously. And then yesterday, the 2nd, I attended, along with Mayor Guerrero, the SECOG Transportation Committee Orientation Session. Both of us will be, I think we're agreeing to that committee to try to serve that together so that we both have interests in representing the city on certain subjects. So it was a good orientation that's going through kind of the schedule and work plan for the year. And then earlier tonight, we had a meeting of the Port District Commission. There was only one closed session item when conferring with rural property negotiator and no public, no other public business. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Roscoe? I think you're frozen. Oh, no, you're not. Go ahead. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was, oh, unfortunately, on the day of, just had to cancel and postpone the meeting due to the blackouts that we were experiencing in the city, which is unfortunate, but it was actually beneficial to get out and try to assist some of our neighbors who were suffering from the, you know, loss of power and heat and whatnot. And I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, since I can't report on Yolo County housing, unfortunately, just to come in, our mayor, our staff, and our Rotary Clubs, those in Clarksville and West Sacramento, as well as the Yolo Food Bank, and folks in the community who just stepped up to try and lend a hand to a neighbor in need. Some of us sat through three days of blackness, unfortunately. And for many of us who are a lot less functional without, say, for example, a car or any other resources to help mitigate the pain of that experience, it was really great to see our neighbors come out in full force to lend a hand. And that is, again, one of the reasons that we all, I think, on this council are proud to work in this great city. So kudos to all the folks who stepped up, including, again, our staff. Just one other thing, Madam Mayor, if you don't indulge me. The Yolo County, or actually, West Sac Downtown Streets team will be having an event tomorrow on Jefferson and Sacramento Avenue from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. And last time they did this, it was 600 gallons of trash they picked up. And I mention that because one of our biggest, we are the, the city is supporting that program going forward, and, you know, through Measure E made that possible. So I just wanted to let the council know the good news that the West Sac Downtown Streets is in full force and appreciates all of our support as they move forward to make our city cleaner and more beautiful. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Roscoe. Just wanted to report out our closed session. We reviewed exposure to litigation and existing litigation and reviewed the labor negotiation status with the Police Officers Association. We didn't get a chance to review our anticipated litigation. We took a break, and we're going to go back to conclude our closed session after the city council meeting. And so we will need to have a motion to go back into closed session, you know, once we're done with the meeting tonight. And as Councilmember Ledesma said, we both reviewed the SECOG's Transportation Committee plan for next year and looking at priorities. We'll be sharing that, you know. We both are very passionate about what is going on in our city. Councilmember Ledesma has been doing some excellent work on public transportation and his knowledge and expertise as we take a look at our bikes and pedestrian trails and all the other, in housing and grant opportunities. We foresee some great opportunities for grants coming into the city. And Executive Director Corliss has been offering opportunities for us to be able to, you know, present what our interests are in our city. And so it was also just a chance to meet with the new mayors around the region and just to get a chance to know one another. Probably not the best way to meet via Zoom. Prefer to meet in person. I'm looking forward to that. And just planning for when, how Councilmember Ledesma and I can both cover the various meetings, you know, looking at what areas we have strengths and more interest to cover those meetings and share that opportunity together. Also, wanted to follow up on Councilmember Roscoe's comments related to the power outage of the number of days and learning that PG&E did not position those power outages as a notification to the residents. That was a major error on their part, I think huge oversight where I notified the California Public Utilities Commission immediately. And that prompted them to take, you know, take the calls and complaints seriously because I was hearing that the calls and complaints that were being phoned in or emailed in were being ignored by the residents. And as a result, and in addition to the California Public Utilities contacted, contacted the California Department of Social Services and Yolo Food Bank to begin dispersing CalFresh benefits, emergency CalFresh benefits for those that are relying on fresh food, which is, which was getting spoiled. And also, the food bank who immediately deployed a truckload of food that was, you know, just a few, you know, just a few hundred pounds of food that was distributed by the Rotary Club and Councilmember Roscoe and other, you know, other participants of the city who generously offered their time. And also, Jean Baba and Holy Virgin Mary, you know, church who made soup out of some of the food that was in those containers. And so that was able to provide a hot meal for people who could not cook that evening. It was just a great time to be together with the residents, but also disappointing for what we experienced with, you know, PG&E. We did try to help in some ways, but there were things that need to be reported, and I'm going to stay on top of that on behalf of the residents to make sure that this doesn't happen again. This is a major oversight on their part and on a failure, both on just the power failure, but even not acknowledging that there was a power failure going on in 4,000 homes in our city. So we'll continue to stay on top of that with the city staff, and thank you for your support in that effort. Okay, so we will now move into the consent agenda. So are there any items that anybody would like to move? Councilmember Roscoe?
Item two, please.
Item two, okay. Any other items? Okay, we'll now have a discussion on item two. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think Tracy Michael, our director, is on the line now. I had a few questions. I am actually happy to see this item before us tonight. And the only reason I pulled it is because I wanted to just make some items of clarification. This item arose during our city council retreat, maybe a year before last, if not last year. And I found it to be a really good idea, specifically, you know, fitness equipment. I've been in the fitness industry for over 25 years. And one thing I know is that the fitness equipment becomes obsolete and overused and breaks down. It's very expensive to fix it, and oftentimes, it's not unusual to have a broken piece of equipment, you know, out of commission for weeks on end while the users are forced to try other things or just, they won't even come. So I'm happy that we're switching to this model of renting and leasing equipment, which I hope, based on the report, will mimic something that's a little bit more modern and, you know, just something a little bit more attractive to our users. The questions I had that I wanted to pose to Ms. Michael are, could we, could you please explain how the, we're going to facilitate the equipment being, essentially, are we doing a full-on clearance of what we have? Are we replacing some items versus others? And how soon will we be doing so? And I know that ultimately, the time we'll be able to use it will depend on what guidelines we receive with respect to COVID guidelines. But will it, I would hate to pay for something that would go without use for some extended period of time when, you know, or maybe there is other mitigating factors. Say, I know some gyms are taking the workouts outside, for example. That would be very cool to know that we would be able to get our benefit from the investment. And then ultimately, who is going to be responsible for the equipment replacement and/or repairs once we have it in our facility? Will they, will they commit to fixing it in a timely fashion? I just want to make sure that the allocation that we're dedicating to this is worth the benefit of our buck. I'm absolutely in favor of going in this direction. Once you, everybody knows that in the fitness industry, once you have one, one thing that's the hot item, it's replaced very quickly by something else. So it's good to have the maneuverability if we need to use it and to make sure that folks who are working out at our rec center are getting the most positive experience for their investment. Ms. Michael?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. And thank you, Councilmember Roscoe, for your comments and questions. So for the, this is new for us. We haven't leased cardio equipment before. It is industry standard practice. But with this lease, we are proposing to obtain 28 new cardio pieces. That's a lot of cardio equipment. Our cardio equipment is 11-plus years old now, which we're at the point where we can't even get replacement parts for a lot of our equipment when it, when it does fail. We have eight new treadmills, a variety of different treadmills to accommodate different user needs and interests. Ellipticals, an astero climber, three recumbent bikes, which are really popular, especially for our senior community. Nine new spin bikes, which will offer a very different and much more modern spin experience in our cycle room and an upper body bike. So that's 28 pieces of equipment. And just by way of example, if we needed to purchase, as we have been doing in the past, some replacement equipment for the annual lease payments of, we're thinking it's going to be about $30,000, you could buy maybe two to three pieces of equipment max. So we think that this is a really good opportunity for us, especially while indoor activities are restricted now, to be able to come in without impacting our customers' experience, replace the equipment. It will take eight weeks to purchase and install from the date we execute the agreement. So we do have some time, and we're very fortunate that OptiFit, the selected vendor, is willing to be flexible with us. If we need more time and want to delay the installation a little bit just to try to line up with what's happening with our COVID protocols, they're willing to do that. We just need to have the agreement executed before March 1st, which was when all the equipment pricing goes up. So we want to take advantage of the pricing that we have now. In terms of the warranty and service over the term of the lease, all of the service will be performed by OptiFit, which is very valuable for us because our staff spends a lot of time trying to take care of those types of items when they could be doing other things to serve our passholders. OptiFit has a great track record. We've actually worked with them before, so we know they're very responsive and are excited to have this. Now, this isn't all of the equipment. We do have some equipment that is purchased and has a longer lifespan, and we will continue to maintain that equipment until it needs to be replaced. So I think that answers all of your questions.
It does. And Tracy, can I just ask, when it comes down to the equipment that's aged, I mean, is that a matter of, are this, are we able to switch? And or is that a different contract? Like, say, this is a five-year contract, but what will we be doing in years two, three, four, and five? Is it only for the 29 items that we have selected? Or will we be able to toggle in between other, say, aged-out equipment?
We do have, that's an excellent question. We do have other equipment, like a lot of the weight equipment lasts a lot longer, and we have that incorporated into our lifecycle replacement costs for the rec center. So we do have some other funding that we can use on an annual basis for some of those items. The cardio equipment is the really expensive equipment. And so this gives us just some assurance that the expensive equipment that our passholders like to use most frequently will be in service for the five-year term. At the end of the five-year term, we have the opportunity to purchase the equipment for a dollar. So if we decide that the equipment's in great shape and we don't think we need to enter into a new lease again, we have some flexibility.
And I know that, for example, at the SAC Police Department, they have three different gym facilities, I think, and even one building. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm wondering, is this a possibility that if we were to do the buyback, that we could donate those or purchase them for the purpose of some of the staff who might be able to make use of them?
Yes, absolutely. We actually are doing that with at least one piece of equipment right now with the fire department. They had a treadmill that went out of commission. And again, their equipment's very old, and it's difficult to replace or repair. So we can absolutely do that. We've even had discussions about how we, if we are liking the leasing option, to take inventory of all of our fitness equipment citywide and looking at ways we can create efficiencies by planning for lifecycle replacement and leasing for all of the equipment at the same time.
Excellent. Thank you. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Alcala?
I just have one question. All the equipment that we're getting, I hope it's all American-made. You know, I know we want to follow what President Biden is asking us to do. So I just hope that any future equipment the city buys is all American-made. Tracy?
Yes.
Is the equipment that we're getting all American-made?
I do not know. I do have some of my team members here that have been working more closely with OptiFit that might be able to answer that question, but we might need to do some research and get back to you on that. I'm going to ask Kaisa Miller, who is here, if she knows. I'm not sure she can log in, but she just texted me. She does not know. So we would have to do some follow-up.
Okay, thank you. And on a similar note, Councilmember Roscoe, sorry, were you going to say something else?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted to clarify one matter, if that's okay. I, we're not purchasing the equipment, correct? We're just leasing it?
We're leasing it. At the end of the lease, we have the option, if we decide to execute that, to purchase it. But right now, this is just a lease.
Thank you. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
And, you know, still, I think the point taken from Councilmember Alcala is that we do stick to have is that we do stick to having equipment that's all American-made so that we support, you know, our country's industry, which I support as well. And also, the comment, Ms. Michael, that you referenced about maybe waiting for a little bit, maybe until March before we start, since I doubt we're going to be opening up gyms in February. Maybe by, by miracle, we'll have a whole bunch of vaccines that'll come out and then we can. But I don't know. And I think you said we could until March. And just to, just to clarify, I'm looking at the fiscal here. Just to clarify for the public, this has been approved already in November by council. And so this is not a new proposed expenditure. This has been something we've been talking about for about a year, in the last year, and how this has been important to be able to have equipment that is up to date and can be maintained. And we chose a lease only because it can be maintained and we're not stuck to the equipment, you know, stuck with the equipment we have to figure out how to get rid of. So I appreciate Ms. Michael's effort to look at the most cost-efficient matter to maintain equipment at our local rec center. And with that, I just, are there any other questions or comments on the consent item number two? Okay, so I'll accept a motion to approve the consent items.
So move.
Councilmember?
You can take.
Everything, and I said, I'm kidding.
Okay. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Sorry.
Aye. Sorry. All right, okay, and it is approved. Next one, move to our regular agenda item four, consideration of a workshop on the first reading of ordinance 21-02, amending Title V, Business Licenses and Regulation of the Municipal Code Relating to Micro-mobility Permit Operations Fee and Requirements. And I believe we will have Ms. Strand present on this item.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Sarah Strand, Senior Transportation Planner with the Transportation and Mobility Division. And the purpose of my presentation this evening is to conduct a workshop on proposed changes to the city's current micro-mobility operations permitting program, which includes the first reading of ordinance 21-02 to amend relevant sections of the municipal code. As you know, the micro-mobility industry has been a very fast-evolving and constantly-changing landscape. And so as such, I'll be starting the presentation with an overview of the history of two vital elements in our micro-mobility program, including the SACOG Regional Bike Share Program, which currently only applies to one provider, and the city's independent regulatory framework for micro-mobility operations, which applies to all operators of bike share and scooter share. I'll also be discussing key elements of the regional bike share program, providing some framing for a few of the proposed changes to our local permitting program. And lastly, I'll be reviewing the key changes that we are proposing for city council discussion and feedback. For almost a decade, our region has been putting immense effort into supporting the deployment of a regional bike share system that can support shifts away from single occupancy driving with broader goals of reducing emissions, to improve air quality, address climate change, alongside co-benefits of increasing mobility options and access, as well as community health outcomes. SACOG formed the regional bike share program in 2013, which includes member jurisdictions of West Sacramento, Sacramento, Davis, and the SAC Metro Air Quality Management District to collaboratively guide the development and implementation of the program. In 2016, the SACOG, or the SACOG, released a competitive RFP to select a bike share operator. And they ended up selecting a private company called Social Bicycles, or SOBE, to operate the system through an agreement with SACOG that retained some control over really important performance aspects of the program, such as pricing or accessibility in equity areas. And then in 2017, SOBE rebranded their operation to what we now know as Jump Bikes. And a preview system was piloted using some unbranded white bikes to create excitement for the pending full launch. In March 2018, the Red Bikes hit the street with the full Jump launch. However, shortly thereafter, SOBE announced the acquisition of the Jump operation by Uber and transfer of the SACOG Regional Bike Share Agreement occurred, which maintains similar terms and conditions. Then in 2019, Uber added East Scooter Share to the menu of mobility options in West Sacramento and the region. And during its first year of operations, the Jump program demonstrated very significant success as the Sacramento region led the nation in bike share ridership. Just to elaborate on that, at the time, typical bike share systems were receiving about two trips per device a day on average. And between April and September of 2019, the Sacramento region system saw an average of five trips per device daily. The total ridership in 2019 amounted to 1.29 million bike share trips, which I'll ask you to forgive me because that's a correction to a lower amount that was stated in your report, and over 450,000 scooter share trips. Additionally, the UC Davis Institute for Transportation completed a survey of bike share users, which reported that roughly 36% of trips were replacing a car trip, which translates to around 390,000 replaced car trips in 2019. Concurrently, local governments across the nation began to work on revising their regulatory frameworks to account for these new mobility services. And in 2018, our city staff conducted a review of industry standards, despite the industry being still very new and evolving. And at the time, many cities had very heightened concerns about the potential impacts of safety and city resources to manage these types of programs. The city council conducted a workshop on the proposed regulatory framework and ultimately codified the current micro-mobility program that we have in March 2019, adopting ordinance 1903, which incorporated guidelines and requirements for business operations into Title V of the municipal code, and then also ensured that Title X regarding vehicles and traffic actually accounted for the rule of safety and enforcement of these types of devices, since they just previously didn't exist. Resolution 1903 was also adopted, establishing a fee structure for the micro-mobility operators, which would ensure that the city could recoup our costs to monitor compliance and provide oversight for the operations. The initial fee structure, which I'll discuss a little bit more later, proposed roughly a one-year pilot to determine what the actual fiscal impacts to the city were to manage the program and would be revisited and revised at a later date, which is part of why we are here this evening. In 2020, significant disruption occurred for the micro-mobility industry at large, as well as in our region. In March, when the COVID-19 pandemic hit, Uber ceased operating the Jump system in the Sacramento region due to a constrained supply of PPE and cleaning supplies available to continue safely operating. And then shortly thereafter, in May, Uber announced that the Jump operation had been struggling to become a profitable business model and was being acquired by Lime, who's another prominent private micro-mobility operator. This required SACOG to renegotiate with Lime the terms of the regional bike share agreement, which Uber was previously operating under. Multiple meetings of the regional bike share program management team of staff, as well as the policy steering committee of elected officials and policymakers occurred to discuss the timelines to reach an agreement and the pros and cons of getting devices back on the street. Ultimately, by August, it was agreed upon that micro-mobility has become a very important mode choice in our mobility system and that it was important for us to preserve access for those who may have been depending on it for daily trips by at least getting some devices redeployed. So this resulted in the execution of a temporary agreement between SACOG and Lime to continue operations, while a long-term agreement continued to be negotiated. And it also resulted in the issuance of temporary permits by the city of West Sacramento and Sacramento to redeploy device devices in each respective city. Concurrently, our city began to attract additional micro-mobility operators that were already actively serving the city of Sacramento as growth and demand indicated that many customers wanted to make trips between the cities but were unable to due to lack of access to those services in West Sacramento. And as such, temporary permits were also issued to spin scooters, bird scooters, and razor scooters in West Sacramento. And those permits were issued as temporary primarily due to staff's knowledge that the permitting program would require updates in these coming months, and it would be more efficient to apply the new regulatory framework once complete. In December of 2020, SACOG reached a long-term agreement with Lime to continue operating the regional bike share system on behalf of the region. And the amendment to the SACOG Regional Bike Share Agreement is included in your report as attachment two for reference. And it included some key modifications that also provide framing for some of the changes that I'm proposing to our local permitting program. Specifically, upon acquiring the Jump operation, Lime reported that every trip being made on a Jump bike was actually seeing a profit-loss of $5 per trip. SACOG went on to conduct some significant outreach with partner jurisdictions and completed a comprehensive research white paper that determined that bike share operations actually across the country had been folding due to a lack of financial viability, which more or less was confirming Lime's claims. And this was also causing Lime to hesitate to redeploy bikes at the time, as they were suggesting a strong preference for scooter deployment because it had proven more profitable. And in the context of the pandemic, all of these challenges were just further exacerbated by significant drops in ridership. So in order to preserve the bike share system and the multitude of benefits that our region had been observing prior to the pandemic, the regional bike share, PMT, and PSC agreed that an agreement should be negotiated that acknowledges these challenges and also finds a way to support the continued operations of bike share for the foreseeable future. The regional stakeholders also agreed that ongoing research and deliberations would need to occur in the coming year to assess other potential options to support a regional bike share program, which might also include things like private sponsorships, nonprofit participation, or revisiting the concept of a publicly-owned system. Ultimately, the final agreement between SACOG and Lime made some important changes that establish minimum quantities for the number of bikes being deployed in the region. It empowers SACOG to maintain some oversight on expansions or reductions in the overall fleet size. And most importantly, it establishes a tiered subsidy and revenue-sharing program to support and preserve the bike share system as ridership recovers. The subsidy uses SAC Metro AQMD funding that is allocated for the regional bike share program. So there's no local funds that were requested or used towards, or will be used towards the subsidy. Shown on this slide is the subsidy level that SACOG is committing to based on the number of trips per bike daily. And as I previously stated, the regional Jump system had reached an average of five trips per device daily in 2019. So the rates shown are fairly reasonable and accurately capture the lower rates of ridership that are currently being experienced as an outcome of the pandemic. The revenue-sharing component of this is that once ridership recovers, which is being defined as 3.5 trips or more per bike daily, Lime will then begin repaying SACOG $0.05 per trip to recover subsidy funds. Similarly, the local member jurisdictions, city of West Sacramento and Sacramento, were asked to consider temporarily waiving the monitoring fees for bike share to help alleviate the burden on the operator through the pandemic recovery. The waiver would not apply to scooter share operations if approved by council. Which leads us to our proposed changes to the micro-mobility program. The changes that are proposed, they're fairly straightforward and they don't drastically alter the current structure of our program. But they do make some important modifications to reduce risk for the city, to facilitate compliance monitoring of these operators, and to align with industry standards and the regional bike share efforts. So specifically, ordinance 21-02 is adding a requirement for operators to fully indemnify the city, which was just not previously included in the original ordinance, just a minor, minor, major oversight that we need to cover. And it also adds requirements for data sharing to ensure that the city receives the proper data formats and ensures that we can require that data to be shared with third-party platforms that are increasingly commonly used to aggregate multiple operators' data into one platform for compliance monitoring purposes. Other changes that are not included in the ordinance include a reduction of the current insurance requirements to meet industry standards and modifications of the fee structure to do the same, as well as support the regional bike share efforts. So shown here, staff is proposing a reduction in current insurance requirements just to align better with the industry standards. We conducted a peer review of multiple other cities and found that West Sacramento's insurance requirements were five times higher. And operators had begun to indicate that this would be a barrier to entry in order to serve West Sacramento's residents with their services. So a reduction, as proposed, would actually also make our requirements consistent with the city of Sacramento's, which just generally helps to create more consistency for operators who are expanding between jurisdictions in the same region. The most significant proposed change to the micro-mobility program is the fee, the fee structure. Modest increases are proposed for the first-time application fee and the application renewal fee. And those increases are really just to account for legal costs and legal review of applications and making sure that compliance is there that were not previously accounted for. The monitoring fee is the next component that is proposed for significant change. We had previously charged the monitoring fee upfront based on the quantity of devices being deployed. And the reasoning originally to do this was to ensure that we had adequate cash flow to support staff oversight of the program. The fee was also developed to be a refundable bond, which would be drawn down by staff as needed. And then the remainder would get refunded to the operator with the implication that a good operator would require less staff resources and get a bigger refund. So it was supposed to be a bit of an incentive program. However, this ended up being somewhat confusing for operators. And at the same time, the industry predominantly shifted over to using a per-trip fee. Most cities have a range between $0.10 and $0.25, depending on the location. So the proposed monitoring fee would shift us over to a $0.10 fee per trip per device. And the real benefit of doing this and shifting to a per-trip fee is that it provides a more realistic approach to the costs of the impacts to city resources. You can think about this because as ridership and fleet size increases, then we would assume that the burden to city staff for monitoring does so accordingly. And the fee owed to cover this greater burden would also increase alongside ridership. So this, this provides some relief to operators during the pandemic recovery as well, since ridership and deployment numbers are currently low. But it also ensures that the city can recoup costs as ridership returns and a greater number of devices need to be monitored in the future. Lastly, there are two new policies that are proposed for city council consideration as part of the fee program. The first one directly supports the SACOG regional bike share efforts by introducing a discretionary bike share fee waiver program. Lime is the only bike share operator in the region currently. And if the city council were to support this proposal, we would return to request formal authorization of the city manager to grant these types of waivers. And this, this approach also preserves more flexibility in ceasing the waiver if ridership recovers to the point where it's no longer necessary. The second proposed policy is a fee forgiveness program that would authorize the city manager or their dozen need to allow up to a total of $1,500 a year in fee forgiveness of monitoring fees only to operators who commit to deploying devices in areas that align with our local goals and initiatives. So this power is, this, this policy is really about empowering staff to better incentivize deployments at things like future mobility hubs in equity areas or in lower-density neighborhoods that operators tend to avoid. But those areas that may benefit from enhanced mobility options. And so at this time, I would like to respectfully recommend that the city council provide feedback and direction on my presentation this evening, waive the first reading and read by title and number only, ordinance 21-02, amending Title V of the municipal code, and inform the public that the second reading and adoption of ordinance 21-02 is scheduled for February 17th, 2021. And unless otherwise directed by city council this evening, staff would plan to come back on February 17th to request adoption of the following items to codify the changes that are proposed here, which would include ordinance 21-02, amending the municipal code, and resolution 21-14, amending the book of fees. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and open it up for any feedback or questions you may have. And I will actually transition to a slide that summarizes the changes for your reference.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, are there any questions from council members on, based on the presentation? Or any other questions at all? I don't know, I can't see everybody. Go ahead, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. And I'll reserve comment. There's public comment first.
Thank you, and and I'll uh reserve comment. There's public comment first. Um, but I just have some comments. I don't have any questions instead.
Okay. And um, council member Alcala, or do you have any questions? Or did you want to wait? Because I can't see.
I will wait also. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And um, I'll, okay, I'll open it up for public comment and each presenter has three minutes. Um, madam clerk, are there any public comments or any written comments of this on this item?
Thank you, mayor. We did not receive any written comments and um there is no, nobody who wants to speak at this moment.
Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to council. Uh, council member Ledesma, you're first.
Thank you, and thank you uh Sarah for um the, the great presentation and thorough review of kind of. Kind of where we've been, kind of where we are, and and I think to agree where we're going once, once the pandemic hits and. Well, you know, one of the things that I, I, A, I'm supportive and of kind of the approach and and um, and. Um, uh, of, of the item, I'm supportive of, of kind of the amendments you're making and, and no really specific questions I can sort of. Uh, because the right approach was taken and I want to step back for a second around. Kind of how we started, which is, you know, when this, when we started our movement into transit mobility solutions a few years ago, as you just noted. The one thing we didn't have was the benefit of kind of really seeing uh the, the value of putting, deploying these. Types of uh micro mobility modes out into our community. And I just, I mean, West Sacramento, I meant the entire region, but, but West Sacramento did, you know. We were, we were unsure about the bike platform, we're unsure about uh more scooters. I think there was a lot of fear and a lot of um other things that were occurring at the time. Um, but we all knew that we would learn, it would be sort of the, this um. Agile approach to, we were gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna run it, we're gonna learn, we're gonna learn, we're gonna learn. And um, and the thing that came, I came out of it through COVID, it was a take a break. We write and take a breather and catch up to where we are. And I think that's what I, I sense this is. The, the issue for me is just the value this has provided. And uh, the, the part that I've learned so much about in transit the last few years is. Um, you, you, just, just the amount of equity. Uh, or shit, the amount of equity, but that trying to provide transit mobility options equitably across our community. And I think that's the value that this has had, more so than anything I can think of. And you can throw or include VIA in our, our transit program into this discussion. Because it'll, where, where typically the model was deploy fixed drop buses and let them run and hopefully people can catch them on time. And working families would have the opportunity to, you know, use those if they don't have a, a different mode. And that, that just really limited what residents and people can live their lives and the quality of life. But the, these, between the bikes and the scooters, and, and I said, I'll, I'll include VIA just for kind of complete the thought of where we are. Have really sort of changed the game and allowed more of our residents. To, to get around in easier ways and sort of the, the setting we have all across the city. And to the point that I see, you know, bikes in my neighborhood right now, and I see scooters in our neighborhood now. At the Southport Town Center, all, all over still even during COVID. So um, the, it, it, we have the benefit of knowing that this, this has created immense value. But we're doing the right thing here, which is catch our breath, make sure we update our ordinances to make sure as we go forward. When the demand comes back that we're ready for it, right? And I think that's what I applaud, and more so that you, you looked at how we did it with other. Cities and communities across, not just near, not across the river, which we want to be equitable with and, and making sure we're, we're consistent with. Uh, with them, they're not, we're not creating unwanted demand or over, you know, anything else. But more so with what we're learning through the communities across the country that are also experimented. So I do agree with that. There are some things you, you learned and you figured out real quick, which is our insurance, the, 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 the. Getting outright size as, as well as uh, as you noted, uh, the, the really, the, the thing we missed in the indemnification, like I talked tonight. Uh, getting that clearly operated, because that was one of the fears about we had when we implemented this at the beginning. And I think that's where uh this, this kind of catching up with kind of where we need to be in the rest of the, rest of the. Kind of the standard or, or of, of uh communities we need to be. So Sarah, you have been a, a sterling staff member leading these efforts for the past few years and thinking ahead. Um, no, you're welcome. Thank you uh for all your work on this. And um, again, I know that we'll still have much to learn. Um, and we have been um, as a city responding very well to the changes in the um. In the, in this market, so, and more so, I know it serves our community. Um, and uh, that's what matters the most. So anyway, just want to say thank you and I'm supportive of this.
Thank you. Council member Roscoe.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I want to echo the comments um of my colleague, council member Ledesma. Um, and I'll begin by extending uh gratitude to you, Sarah, for your commitment and dedication to these, these issues. I mean, I think I can speak for um the council members that were on the council at the time when you came to introduce VIA. And it was just um. A concept that I think many of us were very, you know, not ready to absorb. We wanted to, but we weren't really sure how it was going to work and you delivered and same here. Um, I, you know, I, I know I speak for uh even uh past council member, mayor pro tem Sandine. When I say that you're an absolute asset and we really appreciate your leadership in this space. Um, I, I always draw back to uh my experience when I moved here to West SAC and. And, and the, the, what I used to call the choo choo train caboose, which was the six of us uh in our family trying to ride a bike in, in the city. And there was always someone who um, you know, was, is risking death. And that's why you have a parent on each side of the, of the, the train. But um, I've seen so many wonderful changes over the last several years in trying to make our city that much more bike friendly. And that is only um the greatest benefit to all the families who have chosen West Sacramento uh to raise their, their children. Um, in this case, you know, uh, this, this program has been a win, 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 win. Uh, for many, I mean, when we talk about, you know, transportation flexibility and we talk about equity and access. Some, you know, we see people who are on the lowest to highest socioeconomic levels that are engaging. And uh, and benefiting from this program when it, you know, when it was in its, its prime, you know, before COVID. Um, and you know, for writing reasons, not only are we having reductions to vehicle emissions and just environmental friendly. Um, you know, outcomes, we also have people who are just engaging in health benefits. And they, they get to, to bank on the health benefits when they also don't have a need to purchase, own or, or store the vehicle on their own. There's an accessible bike somewhere nearby, they could just hop on. So uh, you know, we also get the chance to reduce congestion and fuel consumption in our city. And many of us know we have, you know, trucks that are running through the, we have a lot of congestion on some of our major roadways, our arterials. Um, you know, Jefferson and, and in uh, in Harbor. Uh, that would definitely reduce, you know, the vehicles being on the road, destroying our roads and, and at the same time. Um, emitting toxins into, to the environment. So uh, when we think about the financial savings for the users, um. Whether that be, you know, insurance or parking costs or, or gas or, you know, even the purchase of the car. Um, I know that it's, it's, it's got tremendous, tremendous um. Uh, impacts on uh our, the complexion of our city, uh, the costs to the users, to equity. And um, it really is a, a benefit um in our community. And I, and I'm, I'm proud of the considerable investments we've made over the years to make our city uh that much more bike friendly by engaging in. Um, sorry, I have something in my eyes. I'm trying to talk through this eyelash. But it's just really a compliment to all the other efforts that we, we've, we've moved forward. And I, I hope that it'll continue to complement other investments we make in transportation. Uh, whether that be rail service or other types of um ways of getting folks to, you know, to work. Um, I know we share a workforce with Sacramento and it was very common to see those little red bikes flying across. Uh, getting into, to where I work. Um, it's a seven minute drive for me. But I'll tell you, I hopped on a bike for the very first time. During my council tenure, only because of what I'd learned from your presentations. And from seeing what, you know, then became, you know, a shared resource and uh an investment in sustainable transportation. So I'm, I'm happy about that. Um. You know, the, I, I'm supportive of the, the staff recommendation. Um, and I agree that the per trip fee is uh, from based on what I've been taught and what I've heard, learned uh from you and, and from staff. That's the most appropriate um direction. And um, I just want to, to say that, you know, the, the. The forward thinking of our staff. Um, I hope that could, I, I hope that we as a council could continue to support um this movement. Because I think, like I said, it's not a win-win. It is a win-win to the, you know, cubed, as my kids would say it, uh, now that they're learning algebra. Um, and I hope that's algebra, maybe that's something else, maybe, maybe I'm fooling myself here. But um, I, I just know that the investments are going to pay off. You know, uh tremendously. And so with that, I, I, again, will reiterate that I, I support the staff recommendation. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, council member Alcala.
Thank you, Sarah, for this very comprehensive program. Uh, it's outlined and it's just fabulous. It's uh environmentally friendly and very responsible. I did have a question though, you know. Yeah, our lower income folks. I, I, I'm concerned they want to use, you know, these services, but um, I think they're going to need help. And I think it's going to be important for the city to be able to continue subsidizing this. That's just something, you know, that I want to be very cognizant of. Um, you know, we um have so many people that fit that description here in our city. I, I did have um a question as well. Um, so maybe. Who will, who will actually be doing the operation of these and, and maintenance? Um, is it the city that will be doing this or are we going with a private company? I'm sorry, I, I.
Yeah.
I understand that.
I'm happy to elaborate on that. So there's a couple of distinctions to make. And one is um the regional bike share system um that is now currently operated by Lime, but they are maintaining the Jump brand. So you'll still see the red bikes out there. And it is an agreement with SAICOG in which they are privately owning and operating the system. But the agreement with SAICOG um just, it creates a little bit more uh regional control over some of those important performance metrics. So it says, you know, you will meet like a twenty percent uh deployment quota in, you know, equity areas, for instance. Um, and it has a little bit more control over uh increasing or decreasing the fleet size, especially in light of the subsidy program. However, um, our local micro mobility permitting program is really through the lens of a business operations permit. So any private uh micro mobility operator can apply for a permit to operate. And they are a hundred percent responsible for the operations and maintenance of those devices. Uh, so we permit them to operate in our city. Um, and our municipal code lists out all of the rules and regulations that they must abide by, in addition to state regulations that are, I'll note, constantly evolving around this, this subject. Does that fully answer your question? And I'll, I'll also just note to your initial comment, all of the different providers have different levels of um discounts and um incentives for lower income households. I don't have all of that information handy, but I would be more than happy to share that with you in an email, so you have all of it to refer to.
Thank you so much. You answered it completely. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Sarah, for the, you know, excellent background and um all the work, all the hard work you've been putting into this um for, you know, the last year or so. And um glad it returned, you know, I know with the pandemic, we had a suspension. Um, you know, we still trying to figure out how this works and um, you know, you stepped up back up and everybody else did SAICOG did to be able to sanitize them and. Um, be able to make sure that we can continue to use some form of, you know, micro mobility to get people around that are still working. And um, one of the things I'm interested in knowing is, uh, so I noticed the reduced insurance. Um, but, or you know, for bodily injury, personal injury, property damage. I'm interested in knowing, have we been tracking, you know, the times that our firefighters or um our first responder personnel are responding to an injury? And um getting, recouping those costs at this point, you know, based on any, any particular injury?
That's an excellent question, and I do believe that there are some reporting requirements in the SAICOG agreement for like accident reports and that type of thing. I do not have that data handy and I'm not aware of any incidents in West Sacramento. But that's a really excellent question that I can follow up on and make sure that we are tracking moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Just so we, you know, I mean, these are, this is covered, so hopefully we can recoup our cost um here in the city. And um. You know, there, there, we, we used to use them a lot more, um, you know, before COVID. And um, I've seen a, a decreased use, but I'm hoping now that people are getting vaccines and. There's an interest to, you know, go back to school and, and the future, uh, from what I'm hearing, who, who knows, everything's always in flux. Um, that there'll be an increase in, in utilization of um the bikes and the scooters. So just keeping my fingers crossed that we um have enough taken use in the future. Um, given that, you know, it wasn't, it was pretty, was like huge in demand. And um, just the, just the fact that even our buses are not being used today and we're having to get um subsidized just to maintain those at this point. Um, so just keep my fingers crossed that we could benefit from that. Also very supportive of the plan. And um, looking forward to seeing what we could do to accomplish more um in micro mobility here in West Sacramento and sharing it with Sacramento in our region. So, thank you, Sarah. Thank you. And with that, I think you um, if there aren't any other questions. I think we have to accept the first reading at this point, so I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
A second.
Council member Alcala moved, council member Ledesma seconds. Uh, madam clerk, please call the roll.
It's council member Alcala.
Aye.
Council member Roscoe.
Aye.
Council member Ledesma.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you, Sarah. I very appreciate all the work you're putting into this. And our next item is uh item number five, consideration of selection of mayor pro tem. And I just think we just take votes at this point, right? Um, just go back to the city manager real quick, just making sure all we do is take a vote.
Sorry, yes, that's correct. You would, you would need a motion and a vote uh on this item.
Okay, thank you.
If you need any other assistance with the, from staff, we're here.
Okay, thank you so much. Oh, council member, is, council member Roscoe is your hand up?
Um, it was, but I, I guess I just have a matter of, of uh clarification. Is it, is it just open for a nomination at this point?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, uh, please to uh, and I nominate council member Ledesma for mayor pro tem.
Okay. And I'll need a second.
Um, just for.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm a second myself, but.
Well, do you, do you accept the nomination?
I do. I appreciate the confidence, uh, council member Roscoe, but yes.
Thank you, council member Ledesma. I think that's important. Um, so now that you accept the nomination, I'll accept a second. Council member Alcala.
May, may I make a statement first?
Uh, yes, you may.
Permissible?
Yes, you may.
I would like to say first that I will not support any person from area pro tem that will not support the voters' choice of our mayor. In the last meeting, this council was unable to confirm the mayor's committee appointment simply because it was the mayor who made the appointments as provided by law. The law provides the mayor make the appointments and the city council approves them. The city council deadlocked on every single committee appointment made by the mayor. Mayor Guerrero received the highest number of votes in West Sacramento history for mayor. We need to respect the will of the voters. I will not vote for anyone for mayor pro tem that will contribute to this dysfunction I have seen. Not confirming a single city appointment is dysfunctional and it was disrespectful to the mayor. And I will not contribute to that dysfunction. That being said, I certainly hope. That when we arrive at a mayor pro tem, that this statement that I have made. Is taken to heart. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Alcala. Was that a second or is there, should we still need to make a second?
Okay.
I will make a second.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna give it to the city attorney to see if. Yeah, I was gonna give it to the city attorney to see if you could make the second also. I think that was an option as well, but thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I made a second.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala, Councilmember Roscoe established the motion. Councilmember Alcala seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ledesma now, he will be.
Mayor, don't say that. If I can just make a, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll just make a quick statement. And I appreciate the council's confidence. And should the occasion occur when I need to chair the meeting, should the mayor not be present? I, I've joined this council for, been on the council for, for a while, and I take the stewardship of the city very seriously and representing our community, all of the community. And so having, having a, representing our city and chairing the meeting in a fair and equitable way is what being, what I'm focused on. And I, I don't think it's, it's, having a disagreement with members of our council is not unheard of. And, but I do respect my colleagues on this council, and will continue to serve as a steward of the community for this council. So I appreciate your confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma. Councilmember Roscoe?
Thank you. I, I, I also, I'm excited about the, the future under the direction of both the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem. I'm, I'm actually not certain what, what to think about my colleagues' comments, because I, I don't think that anyone held up any commission or committee meetings last week. If anything, I think we all agreed and worked together for a common purpose. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate the vote on behalf of my colleagues. I think that we have a tremendous potential to work together, to work together for the betterment of our city. And I look forward to seeing both Councilmember Ledesma, Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma, and Mayor Guerrero lead our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also look forward to working with Vice Mayor Ledesma. We have had the opportunity to work together as a subcommittee. I do know that when we first started, it was, you know, there were just, there, there were disagreements. And, you know, I've, I've always been hopeful that maybe we can move beyond that and work collaboratively as a council. I think that's, you know, what the people are expecting for us to work collaboratively in some way, and, and respectfully for one another. It's having, having a level of decorum on council and making sure that we can get their voice heard and representing them is pretty critical to them, especially during this time of crisis with the pandemic. And then on top of that, other effects that have happened from the weather, you know, it, it doesn't take much to tip people's lives to a crisis stage these days. And so our leadership, working together, demonstrating a united front is extremely important on their behalf to maintain stability and a good quality of life in our community. So just like to, Councilmember Alcala, you have some comment?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Ledesma. And I did want to clarify, when I referenced the committees, those were the citizens' commissions that I was referencing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Ledesma. We'll move on now to the next item on the agenda is the council calendar. Are there any items to report, Assistant City Manager?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Gro, council members. No, I have no report tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. And as you know, sometimes with these reports, I like to take an opportunity to acknowledge staff for incredible work when it's deserved. And I definitely think it's been talked about tonight with the storm last week, both with our emergency operations center staff, our communications staff, they know who they are, but especially our operations departments, the fire department responded over 100 calls, police department, public works operations, and parks maintenance groups for all the work with the cleanup, but especially the, those in public works L and M that worked at, I believe, a 12 plus hour shift in the night of the storm. And they'll all say that, you know, this is their jobs, this is what they do every time. But I'll say they do it very well, and it's very appreciated. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager. I just also want to commend the work that our city staff have been doing for the last few weeks for first responders, you know, and preparation of the inauguration and public safety challenges and the threats that we've been hearing. And then after that, the storm, you know, that's, that's a huge load, you know, just ongoing for them to take and very appreciative here on council. I think all of us echo that sentiment. And it just stood, I see a bunch of hands up. Anybody want to speak? Anybody else want to speak? No? Okay. So thank you once again. Councilmember, okay, Alcala is your hand up? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for your incredible leadership, you know, during the storm and in the aftermath, you know, your tireless efforts trying to get our West Sacramento electricity back up, keeping us informed of, you know, updates on what was going on. I think the community, you know, felt a calm with you at the helm. So I just wanted to thank you and all our firefighters, our city workers, our police, and all the wonderful organizations that were out there, our business people who are bringing food to everyone, of course, the Yellow Food Bank. It, it made everyone feel so, very much like a family, I should say, you know, with everyone working together. I know, I saw pictures of you mayor out there, also Councilmember Roscoe, providing food for our communities and stuff. So these are the things that make all of us feel good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney report?
I have nothing tonight.
That direction from city council members? No, okay. And future agenda item request by council? And I think at this point, I, we will adjourn back to closed session. So I'll accept a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Ledesma seconds. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
It's Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Okay, we'll, we'll back to closed session. I think we all got some links for that from City Manager.
That's right. I sent a new link. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.